Good afternoon. Welcome to the November Planning Commission Session. Just want to give a welcome to Planning Commission members, staff and guests. Multiple staff members are here today to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly and all applicants and members of the public are able to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times.
If you are here to speak about a case today, please provide your name and clearly speak into the microphone. And also, please be sure to sign in either at the back of the room or at the podium for documentation purposes. If you're here today to speak about a case, you must speak up when the chairperson calls for public comment. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Brabham?
Here.
Mr. Causey?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Cuvney?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Holcomb?
Here.
Mr. Osorio?
Here.
And Mr. Coen?
Here.
We have quorum.
All right, I'll give a brief overview of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers and architects. The time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding the request. During the public comment period, members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. After the public comment period, applicants have five minutes to respond. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. And the Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes since publication.
All right. We will start with the consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, you must speak up after the consent agenda is read. Then that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. Will staff please read the consent agenda?
Certainly. The first, first case or the first item on the consent agenda is to approve the October 9th, 2025 minutes. Next, under interim, future land use amendment and interim zoning amendment for a pending annexation is annex-2025-0022, 1227 and 1235 Bakersfield Road, 106, 112, 118, 119, 130, 131 and 140 Diamond Lane and 1049, 1057 and 1065 Statler Road. Request recommendation on the assignment of the interim land use classifications of Urban Core Community Activity Center, UCAC2, and Urban Edge Residential Large Lot, UER2, and the assignment of interim zoning of Community Activity Center Corridor District, CAC, and Residential Single Family Large Lot District, RSF1, for a pending annexation. The properties are currently classified as mixed-use corridor and mixed-residential high-density in a priority investment area and Community Activity Center with a portion in a Neighborhood Activity Center and zoned general commercial and residential R2 by Richland County. The third case is a future land use amendment and a zoning amendment for a pending annexation, annex-2025-0020, 2430 Chapelle Street and unincorporated portion of 2428 Chapelle Street. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Core Residential Small Lot, UCR1, and the assignment of zoning of Residential Single Family Medium Lot District, RSF2, for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed-residential high-density and zoned R5 by Richland County. Fourth case on the consent agenda is annex-2025-0021, a portion of 101 and 119 and 125 Lake Murray Boulevard. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Edge Mixed Residential, UEMR, and the assignment of zoning of Residential Mixed District, RM2, for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed-residential high-density and zoned R3 residential by Richland County. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any commission members that would like to see any item on the consent agenda removed to the regular agenda for discussion? Any members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the October minutes and the November consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the October 9th, 2025 minutes and the rest of the consent agenda.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're flying, uh, we're flying blind right now.
Oh. Well, I think I can read the...
All right. All right, we'll move with the regular agenda. All right, I got one. That one's out. Thank you. We'll use the following outline for the regular agenda items. The administrator will introduce the case and the applicant will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. Planning Commission may ask questions. The public comment period will be open to those present. After the public comment period is closed, the applicant will have five minutes to respond to the public comments. Planning Commission may ask additional questions of the applicant. Then there'll be deliberation and action by the Planning Commission. First item.
Hi, good afternoon. So the first item on the regular agenda is, it is case ZMA 2025-0018. And this is a request for recommendation to rezone a property at 1700 Block of Rosewood Drive and Fulton Street, TMS number 113091810, to rezone it from Neighborhood Activity Center Corridor District and Airport Safety Overlay District to Neighborhood Activity Center Corridor District without the overlay. What I will note on this is just a couple of things about what the airport safety overlay is and the state of South Carolina through its, uh, you know, they have designated areas around airports that have varying levels of protections. And they have asked localities throughout the state to implement protections. And so this is a protection within our zoning ordinance. This is not, this is not exactly reflect what the state's maps are. And actually, here, I'll grab that real quick. So, so the state, for example, they've, these are kind of the, this is a schematic illustration of, of what the state's land use zones are. And you can see it goes all the way out to this outer approach zone, horizontal zone, conical zone. What we're talking about, this overlay is within one of these airport safety zones. And this one in particular is within the inner approach zone. So it would be the, kind of the medium purple on this map. And so this is the property and this shows extent of the runway protection zone that the property is in. Now, our overlay itself does not go quite as far. This is actually the furthest extent of the overlay and it's just north of Rosewood Drive. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, but also I do know the applicant is here and available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak to the request? Would you mind please come into the podium if you wish to discuss it? Can you, can you please, can you please come to the podium, sir? Thank you. It's okay. Just right. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Ashu Kumar. I am a GC, a commercial GC from Kumar Construction. And I'm representing the owner right now. He wants to build some apartments in this property. He already have a gas station in Bill in place. And he's also working with an architect who can design accordingly. And that's where we are planning to do it.
Do you, any, thank you, do any commission members have any questions for the applicant?
Does he own the gas station right next?
Yes, sir. He have, in this property, there is a gas station already existing.
This property has a lot of topography, doesn't it?
Yes, it does have some kind of elevation, which we are trying to get it resolved by an architect, a civil engineer, I would say. And like, I think I have already forward those drawings to Mr. Andrew about those things, which can be reviewed.
How many units in the apartment?
Three units per floor and he got three floors. So I would say nine.
What's the height restriction with the proposed 35?
So within the overlay, there's a maximum height of 35 feet, but also residential uses are not permitted. And if it, if the overlay was removed, it would permit residential uses. The district has a height limit of 50 feet. Because it is adjacent to a residential property, it would be capped at 45 feet. However, whereas the overlay has a 35-foot hard limit. In our normal height limitation allows chimneys and mechanicals and things like that to project above the height.
So essentially removing the overlay allows residential with a maximum height of 45 feet, right?
Correct.
Do, do sites within a certain distance of the approach have to submit to the FAA anyway?
So the process would be that we would submit this to the SE Aeronautics Commission for review and they would make their recommendation both on land use and on, you know, other things, right? So height, et cetera. FAA also has regulations, so there would be some limitations on that. But the Aeronautics Commission does not recommend residential in the airport safety zones. I think here's their... So they would say that, look, if it's over, you know, two units on a two-acre lot, that, that would be something they would not recommend. So our overlay basically prohibits residential and commercial districts if it's within the overlay. The district does allow multifamily, but not because of the overlay.
Okay. But there's residential all in this overlay?
That's correct, however it predates the state code.
I'm also, how, that's more than 600, how, do we know exactly how far that is from the runway?
You know, I apologize, I've, I've not, I don't...
I'm sorry. Yeah, for the applicant, we can have you come back up in a minute. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Peter Savalas, Airport General Manager for the Jim Hamilton LBO's Airport. I work for Richland County. And I've been working, I've worked in the past with the city planning staff on this. We have other developments that have happened off the end of the runway, a little bit closer. This one in particular is about 4,900 linear feet from the end of the north end of the runway, about .81 miles from the end of the runway. It is offset off the center line, so it's not in a direct path. But what we've done in the past, what I've done already with the, with the developers, other two developers, there's a property that was developed on Pickens Street and then there was also one done on, I believe it was Greg Street. I've created an navigation easement that's been approved with the FAA and with the county attorney on the matter. And what it does, it basically identifies the airport, that the airport exists and that the air traffic could potentially come over the development and that we are hold harmless, we're undemified from all, all and any traffic that comes over the, the property in question.
Thank you, Mr. Savalas?
Yes.
One of the questions, I think I just, to make sure you understand this correctly, does the OV, removing the OVA zoning overlay, that doesn't absolve having to come?
No, it shouldn't, because it's an established zone laid out by the, by the state and by the, by the federal government to meet the requirements. But again, there are ways to, and again, we can't stop the, the development around the city. It's happening and especially in that area, a lot of residential in support of the university and that, and just in general, that area. So given that, and given that I have traffic coming into the airport at all times, a lot of general aviation and corporate jet-type traffic, that's the largest that will ever come into that airport. We just need to establish sort of the, the boundaries of who's coming in and who's going over it and, and, and the developers need to understand that, that we have the traffic that's going to come through there.
In, in the submittal to South Carolina Aeronautics, aren't, isn't there a graphic where you have to look at the angle of approach and so forth?
Yes, sir, there is. And, and they are very stringent on their, on their requirements. And as far as I understand, I don't believe this one actually falls in that zone, but it would be considered in other properties incompatible land use. So, and they, they try to push that, they, they don't want that, but we're in the middle of a city. You can't stop the development and the growth. So this is the best way I see of working with the, the development that goes around the airport.
A 45-foot tall building at this location would, I think you said this, would likely fall under any sort of?
It would technically.
Angle of approach, correct?
Right.
Significantly, I would think.
Yes, yes. Because at that point, at 4,900 feet away from the end of the runway, the aircraft should technically be on a higher elevation.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, one, one question, I, I may have misunderstood. You said you had worked with other developers in the past and had this?
Here, yes, sir, within the last two years.
Is that something this developers work with you or you're willing to do that with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can do that too, here with this one. If the developer will contact me and we'll work together on, and again, I did one on Pickens Street and I believe I did one on Edisto Avenue. Those two developers recently came up to you guys, I believe, for approval, so.
Any further questions?
I'm okay, I'll ask staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sure it's in front of me, but the lot's only like .32 acre, right? It's very small.
It's a relatively small lot.
I'm not sure what commercial would even work there, but...
There is one property which is exactly across the street of where my client is trying to build an apartment, which is, which they have converted to, they have rezoned it. So, and that was falling under your airport restrictions. So is there something which we can also get rid of?
So I think that's, that's what we're, we're going to understand. Thanks.
I have a question, if you'll mind, sir.
Mr. Kumar, would you, would you mind coming back up for one moment? Thank you.
Sorry, help me understand, is it planned to clear the gas station and then put up apartments or to have it on the lot with the gas station?
We have already in a gas station right now, but on the side of the gas station where the elevation is, we're trying to build up over there. Okay. Might be possible down the lane, we may clear that gas station and build one whole apartment.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Want to have any further questions? All right, are there any members of the public that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, any commission members have any further questions of the applicant or staff? All right. Have a motion. Need to further discuss? I guess for clarification's sake for us, just also, the zoning is independent of the use in this, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
We're evaluating this motion for a change in the zoning, it should remain independent of any, any use?
Any specific use, I mean, in this case, the, I mean, it's appropriate to consider the totality of uses and, and so this amendment has the effect of allowing residential uses. And, you know, of course, it wouldn't necessarily be the specific use. And I, I will say, and I believe you all are already doing so, but one thing I did forget to mention is that certainly that Aeronautics does want us to consider, you know, the, the airport safety overlay when, when making one's determination, but certainly for testimony from an airport professional.
If, if there was a motion to approve this, would we be able to have that include a subject to working out? An easement? No?
No.
Okay. But height would keep them limited anyway, just with zoning restrictions?
Correct.
Okay.
But not being an overlay?
I have a question for staff. Was your reservations with this proposal, was it more related to the use, like being residential or to the height or both?
Well, from, from a staff standpoint, you know, our primary thing is, you know, we've had discussions with Aeronautics and the airport in the past and, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're bringing them into the decision process. So I guess I'll leave it at that. So, so from the staff standpoint, it's both the use and, and the height, but certainly you can take the totality of testimony today to determine whether this is an appropriate removal.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'm inclined to support this. Just the common sense test tells me that it's surrounded by dense residential. We've approved other uses in a similar area. I mean, I, I think maybe I would feel more comfortable if the airport director's easement was in place at this, but I don't think it necessarily changes the crux of the matter, in my opinion.
That's kind of where my sentiment is as well.
And Mr. Chair, just to be clear, even if we remove the overlay, he still has to go get the easement before they can?
He doesn't, he does not, but there are height restrictions. The thing Mr. Cook was alluding to would be, it would be nice if that was a formal part of the process, but I don't think we have that in place currently.
I mean, I will say that it is likely that Aeronautics would recommend the, you know, these easements, but it's the overlay that requires them.
Gotcha. Okay.
For staff, would any further use need to come back or just a major plan like an apartment?
It would need to be a residential development of over 25 units to come back before the Planning Commission for site plan review or a major subdivision, which I don't foresee. So it would not be coming back. Now, there have been developments that have been done within the overlay, but they are on properties that allow residential already, excuse me, sorry, that are considered to be residential zoning districts, so, all right.
All right, any further questions or comments? Take another pass at a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend the zoning map for the property at 1700 Block, Rosewood Drive and Fulton Street, ZMA 2025-0018, as it meets the decision standards outlined in section 17-2.5C in the Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you, we've got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a text amendment. And this is a request for recommendation to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 17, Article 4. I won't make you listen to me read the alphabet soup here, but this is basically to add short-term rentals as a principal use and to establish and clarify rated, sorry, related definitions and standards. I'm sorry, related definitions and standards. And, you know, the short version is, is that it would add it as a regulated use within the U D O. Currently, the city regulates short-term rentals through its rental registration program. And, you know, there's, of course, long-term rentals and short-term rentals, and there are performance standards within within that ordinance. This would further add it as permitted in our our districts that we call mixed-use activity center and corridor districts and also our E C district. And then it would allow it as a conditional use within residential districts. And and specifically, the conditions are that it be on a road that's classified as a collector or arterial in our comprehensive, excuse me, in our comprehensive plan and that it have four through lanes. And so we've defined the through lanes just for the sake of clarity. And and so, for example, a through lane is not a turn lane. It's not a twiddle, which is the, sometimes known as a suicide lane, you know, the the lane in the middle of the road that you can turn either direction. I will say that on a brief analysis, that I don't think there are any four-lane roads that would not meet the criteria of being a collector road or an arterial, but we figured it's best to do that just in case there's some sort of, we missed something when reviewing the city and there might be a four-lane section in a, on a residential street. So, there are some maps that have been provided, both overview maps in a packet and also, you know, we kind of have some zoomed-in maps to show the totality of where we understand short-term rentals would be permitted. The, you know, as you notice, the the commercial districts, we're showing the entire districts. But when it comes to residential properties, you know, again, like I said, it needs to be a parcel that actually has frontage on one of those four-lane roads. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Any commission members have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, this is a staff, staff brought this forward, correct?
Sure. Council did, did ask for this amendment, but it is a staff application.
Okay. I mean, it kind of seems to me like, you know, there's language in here, but it seems to be basically effectively banning short-term rentals in all residential neighborhoods?
Unless it's on a major street, yes.
Okay.
Um, I will say for the record, any existing lawfully permitted short-term rentals, as as any use that would become not conforming over time would be regulated as a non-conforming use, and so it's allowed to continue, it may be transferred to another property owner as long as it's not discontinued. And I believe it's, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number, but there's quite a few already permitted in residential neighborhoods.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, there any members of the public have any comments? Yes. Yeah, thank you. Tell us your name, please.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is David Bergman. I'm a small business owner here in Columbia and I run, how much time do I get? Three or two? Two. And I run a property management company focused on short-term rentals. We employ about twenty-five people and our office is based in Elmwood Park. I want to start with September sixteenth, the council meeting. We were told that the public, that Mayor Rickman said that we, the public would have time to review the maps and incorporate feedback and that would be shared before this meeting so that residents and stakeholders have ample time to review it. That never happened. The maps and standards were released yesterday. You could see they were exported last Friday, giving the people who are most directly impacted almost no time to understand them, let alone develop a response. More importantly, not a single operator that I know of, homeowner or S T R-related business was invited to any conversations with staff over the last two months ahead of this meeting. This means the policy being evaluated here today has had zero input from the people who live in this industry every day. My twenty-five people and we have hundreds of people who are hosts in the city and cleaners and maintenance people and homeowners, none of them have been given input. This policy impacts all of these people. They should all be included at the table in planning. That should be the standard, I think, to develop good policy. I want to make sure that the recommendations coming out of this bo- this body, that they're informed and balanced. Policy is going to work best when everybody's voices are heard, neighbors and operators and homeowners and small businesses like ours. We know a lot about this industry. I mean, you guys probably don't, and that's okay, but I'd like to help educate you guys and bring forward a good policy, one that's good for the city. And I'm open to limitations on short-term rentals, I am, to make it work for the neighborhoods. So, I would just ask that we defer this item until the Planning Commission and staff can can truly engage with the stakeholders and gather more feedback. I would, I would just really appreciate that if it could be considered. Thank you.
Have a question. What's your specific issue with the proposal today?
Um, well, it's a ban on our business, which, I mean, if you think about short-term rentals and the, where they are, last time you guys went on vacation and stayed in, let's say, an Airbnb, just think, was was that on a four-lane road? Just, I mean, is it really truly a question? If if anybody, if it was on a four-lane road, no, it's just, it's, it's not. Short-term rentals tend to be for families who need, like, I have a six-year-old, a three-year-old and a one-year-old. I can't stay in a hotel. And a lot of people who are staying in accommodations, they don't want to be in hotels. They want, for those of us who have kids, you know, you need laundry, you need beds, blackout curtains, shut your kids away and maybe you can have dinner with your wife at night. You can't do that in a hotel. So, it's providing a different type of accommodation, one that I think is needed, but I think four, four-lane roads is a pretty limiting requirement that we have put forward. Maybe there's, it could be on arteries, but maybe those that are even two-lane, that that might be reasonable. Just an idea.
I have a question. What kind of restrictions and limitations does the city have on short-term rentals at present? Like, what do you have to abide by?
Yeah, it's, it's really extensive. I worked with Howard DeVal in the city and we actually had quite a few workshops on that back in like, it was like twenty-twenty-two when this came up. And it's really restrictive, occupancy limits, parking limits, quiet hours, I could go on and on, just all these things. And we actually, just at the last city council meeting, passed a third reading of amending that to make it even more restrictive, just so that it's, you know, when there are short-term rentals in the city, that that those are not disturbing and affecting the peace of the neighbors. So, that's been something that's kind of been an ongoing process of adjusting.
I got a quick question, too. So, in your opinion, is there a effective way for problem Airbnbs to be, have their license revoked in the city of Columbia at this point?
Absolutely, enforcement. And that's what we heard from David Hatcher, head of code enforcement. He did a working session in July and stated upfront, like, they need manpower. And that's what the, I understand the council has given them, is one additional staff member. At the beginning of coming out with the ordinance, there was an intent of the emails from Howard where they were going to hire a specific dedicated resource for specifically short-term rentals. That's what's done in other cities. They didn't do that, and then there's been zero enforcement since. So, what we've asked city council to do is really, let's try and enforce it. I think it's important and it helps those of us who are good operators, like, we have ninety permits, we're the largest permit holder in the city, and we've only ever had one violation. And that was for trash and we resolved it. So, I think there is a good way to separate what we call the bad apples from the good apples.
Do you know if if you applied this to the ones you currently have licenses for, how many would not qualify?
I would, it would probably be, out of the ninety, it would probably be eighty-five would not qualify. We have a few on Bull Street. I think that would qualify and maybe one on Rosewood. But for the most part, when you think of short-term rentals, they, the reason people book them is to be kind of more tucked away, not on a busy road with their family.
So, you have ninety units?
Yes, yes, sir.
How do we balance that as a board with the fact that we need, you know, there's a need for affordable housing in the city right now?
Yeah.
And that's ninety less units that are available.
It's a great question. I mean, I've looked at the numbers, there's about four hundred and sixty permitted right now. And if you look at the total housing stock in Columbia, that's like less than half of one percent. I think there's maybe other things affecting affordability to a greater degree. That's at least what I'm seeing, but a lot of people are using it. They're putting one, and this doesn't allow for this. If you have a primary residence, maybe you have a garage apartment, and people are using this for their home to be more affordable, to help pay down. And a lot, we have a lot of retirees that we manage for like that, where they have a little garage apartment and we manage that for them.
How many owners are represented across the ninety properties that you manage?
Probably about eighty. Though we don't have a lot of density, um,
So, you're not seeing like one large company owning short-term rentals?
It's mainly owners that, you know, they, they lived in Columbia, now maybe they're moving away, but they still have family here, so they want to come back and stay here, but they need to offset the cost, the property, the property taxes are expensive, so they come to us to help.
Um, staff, just to clarify, if this does pass, any properties that have already been established and are not breaking code will be able to stay or no?
That is correct. And and just for the sake of clarity, there's approximately four hundred and twenty-six permitted short-term rentals in the city.
From your experience, just picking on you because you're here, how are, you know, safety matters handled? Have you ever had any type of complaints or, you know, because you are in those neighborhoods where people do have young kids? I understand, like, how helpful it is to families visiting, but I'm also thinking of the families living in those neighborhoods and, you know, new people coming in every weekend, especially in Columbia.
Yeah, I, I definitely think there's maybe a misunderstanding that the use is is a shorter duration, but a lot of times it's, it's two to three weeks. We have a lot of contractors, nurses, people coming in for those longer stays. Our average stay is like three to four times a hotel. And that's why people are getting these accommodations is because they have full kitchens and laundry and stuff like that. So, it serves a slightly different use than just weekends. There are weekends. But I would say my experience has been, a lot of times, our guests, the safety concerns we're dealing with is a guest who's checking into a property and not feeling so safe with the neighborhood that they're arriving to. We deal with that more than we deal with a neighbor letting us know that they're concerned about the safety of our guest.
Question for staff. This text amendment originated with council, as written?
No, council had directed that we prepare a text amendment.
I had the same question.
With these restrictions, though?
Um, they had had asked for it to be, you know, directed towards the the busier areas of town.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and this amendment, if we were to approve it, still has to go to council, correct?
That's correct.
I have, I have another question for staff. So, are there particular areas, I mean, I know this is a broader topic that is pretty sensitive, that have been maybe more vocal or where this is be, is more of a known issue?
Um, you know, certainly of those four hundred and twenty-six, the majority of them are closer in town. Um, I mean, there are certainly ones throughout town, excuse me, but there are some neighborhoods that are more highly represented with with short-term rentals. And I apologize, I don't, I don't have the maps in front of me now, but, you know, Earlwood, Elmwood Park, et cetera.
And then, Earl, in order to have a permit for this, do all these shift from owner-occupied to non-owner, non-owner occupied tax places?
No.
No?
Yeah, the state regulates what can be four percent or six, excuse me, four percent or six percent. And I forget the exact number of days, but there's a certain amount of days that you can rent it out and still be considered four percent. I apologize, I don't, I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Any further questions for?
Yeah, I got one more thing. So, you know, you're saying maybe in the whole city, it's like half a percent or short-term rentals. Has anybody talked about neighborhood or area-specific limitations as well, and is there anything in place for that already?
There isn't, but that was, that has been our position from the short-term rental community, is that caps have worked really effectively in places like Mount Pleasant and, I'm trying to remember, I think Folly and a few other places where this is an issue. I like caps. I propose capping at, at the current level. It just allows there to be a replacement. Right now, if you guys vote for this, like, if I lose a property, it's gone forever. There's a very low likelihood we're going to get a commercially zoned short-term rental. It's just, it's just very unlikely. So, that basically means my business will be forever deteriorating and and losing clients, and I have no way to replace them. So, I think if we do that
So, area-specific caps are not in place, but you've seen it implemented in other municipalities?
Area-specific or city-specific, it just, and and when they do city-specific, sometimes there's even an additional restriction on how far from another rental it can be. So, it could say a hundred feet. So, I think that kind of addresses the density and concern from neighbors that, like, an entire neighborhood like Elmwood Park could just become, you know, just a tourist area or something like that, which nobody wants.
So, if I was a property owner and I used your company to Airbnb or short-term rental my house and I was to want to sell that, does that go away? Does it follow the homeowner or does it follow the home? Can I sell it and it stay? In other words, if this were to pass, like, the current, the people who have licenses, can they sell their home and they stay short-term rentals? I mean, I don't even know if you knew the answer to that.
I think staff can answer. I'm fairly certain it would be a non-conforming use.
Yeah, right. So, a, a non-conforming use stays with the property, so it's regardless of ownership.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other members of the public that would like to? Thank you.
My name is Joseph Guido. I'm here, and I appreciate y'all's time, Chairman Coon and commission members and staff. Thank you. I'm here to discuss the short-term rentals as a regulated use. I'm hoping that this does not pass, and I would also like to see the moratorium on short-term, short-term rentals be lifted. I, I live in Shandon. I've got rentals across the street. I've got rental to my right and to my left, quadruplex to my right. So, I'm surrounded by rentals. I'm a homeowner and I'm also a landlord. My wife and I, we own several rental properties in Columbia and we do have one Airbnb. And we do enjoy the option to do this, and we would like to see about converting one of our, our long-term rentals into an Airbnb. It's been our experience that every time we convert one of our long-term rentals into an Airbnb, we typically beautify the property. We try to make it nicer and better, more modern, because we're trying to appeal to people. One of the things that we do with all of our rental properties is we have to fill out this form. This is given to the city of Columbia and it identifies the property, who I am, my phone number, my contact information and whether I live in the city limits or whether I'm an absentee landlord. There's a checklist of items that I have to meet to be able to rent a property. Every year, I've got to fill this out and resubmit it for every property that I own. There's also a, the, a citation set up. All these code requirements are enforced by the City of Columbia Police Department. So, what's happening is that there is a process in place right now where you can regulate who is renting, whether it's a long-term, short-term or Airbnb. If there is any violation, whether it's some type of a nuisance, there's a point system set in place that if your neighbor, you're having a noise complaint, you call the City of Columbia, you identify the property, they send a letter to you identify the property, they send a letter to the, uh, homeowner and they notify that it's a nuisance complaint. They identify what the complaint is, and then there's a point and it's a hundred dollar fine. Um, if the, if the recurrence happens twice in one year, it's two points, two hundred dollars. Three times in one year, it goes up to five hundred dollars and is five points. If there is a serious violation where there can be bodily harm or injury, you get ten points. You lose your ability to rent this property out. I feel like we've got a system in place where we can start weeding out some of the bad apples, because I get it. Um, I don't want to be in a situation where I've got a noisy person all the time. And, uh, I do think that we have something that can address those issues. So I just would like to use that rather than have a ban altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Why do you short-term rental the properties instead of long-term rental?
So the, the, there are advantages of short-term. Um, it does generate a good return. Um, it does cater to a different market. Um, and, uh, uh, it's, um, what we've noticed with the properties is they actually are less abused than long-term. When you have somebody there that's long-term, most of the time when people do a short-term rental, they'll come in for a couple of days, uh, sometimes longer. We have had people stay for like construction durations or they're doing a, um, audit, things like that. But they're, most of the time they're at work or they're going out to eat. And they tend to have less wear and tear on the property uh, than actually some of the long-term people that stay in there. Because they're, they're home every day, they're sitting on the sofa or they're doing whatever they're doing. So, um, you know, we, there is value, I think, in short-term rentals. So.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Kim Franklin. I'm incredibly nervous, so forgive me. I also run a small business. I assist owners in managing their properties when they are not, um, in town or, um, in cases where they've moved out of town and choose to keep their property here. I would urge you to consider not approving this. As, as these gentlemen have said, this is effectively a ban on our business. There, whether we consider caps, whether we have input into a map that would protect certain areas, there are certain things that I think have not been considered, given the current zoning issues. There are areas, particularly the areas, um, next to Divine Street, the, the new improvements that have happened on Rosewood where the zoning hasn't kept up. But those would be really great places to have short-term rentals. And I, and I do manage some short-term rentals in those areas. But this effectively eliminates our ability to even work in those areas, you know, near the new Starbucks, near the Masa. Um, and then, given this, do we then have to rezone properties that back up to other zoning options? You know, if we back up to a commercial property, then do we have to go through the process of zoning? I feel like this is not considered, um, the advantage that short-term rentals add to Columbia in terms of both rooms and resources, particularly for folks who come into town, um, who work in the medical community. And we also have a strong connection to the military community, hosting lots of Fort Jackson families that come either, um, for graduations or for longer-term deployments, and they need places for their families. So I urge you to, to reconsider this as an option. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carla Guido, Joseph Guido. Um, one, one question that was brought in the beginning is somebody had asked, you know, why is this addendum being brought forth? And, um, and I kind of asked myself the same thing, because this addendum to what has already been in place is being brought forth by, um, staff and council not, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a complaint so much of the neighbors and, and the area. It, and we already, they've already put together, um, like my husband was saying, they already have a point system that they, they put together, um, that the staff and council, you know, the city had already put together, but they're not enforcing it. And when I've gone to some of the city meetings or the neighborhood meetings, I ask people, I'm like, when you have an issue with your Airbnb next door, who do you call? And no one seems to know the phone number to call to say, hey, I've got a problem and to have them come there and then the point system be enforced and then the bad people, you know, that are bad or causing issues be removed from the actual system. So I think that it's kind of unfair that they're now making an addendum to something that they have, you know, put together for the Airbnbs, but they actually never enforced their original plan that they put together. Instead, now they're already making an addendum to eliminate a lot of future Airbnbs and some potential ones that are out there waiting, um, for approval to be able to start as an Airbnb.
Thank you. I have a, for a question for staff. Is, is that enforcement, do you know, is that handled through the police department or code enforcement or?
Um, it, it is handled through code enforcement. And of course, if, if this was part of the zoning ordinance, we would regulate the location.
Gotcha. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, everybody. Um, Matt Varner. I am a resident, uh, of Arsenal Hill, Stark neighborhood across the road, uh, vice president of the neighborhood as well. Um, we are not in favor of this amendment in its current form. I just, I'll speak for myself on this. Um, I know at least four neighbors that have, uh, short-term rental properties in the neighborhood. It's a way for us, kind of in a transitional neighborhood, to kind of manage the neighborhood and control it somewhat. Um, it's, uh, I'm not against regulation. You know, the, the tragic incident that happened is something that spawned a, you know, the current, uh, conversation about it. So there's, there's work that we can do. I think there's a win-win out there. I think we're close to it already. Um, but you know, what do we want Columbia to be? Uh, we're hosting people, visitors, and, you know, it's in my neighborhood. Um, we're, we're a city, we're downtown, we're not an HOA, we're not a gated community. I think there's a way we can welcome people to Columbia and have a win for both, you know, the, the property owners and keep their rights from being trampled on. Um, and, you know, and the point being also that accessory, accessory dwellings, I think, are, are on the chopping block for this too, that would not get to be used for short-term rentals. And that is a way for people to kind of supplement and become as homeowners. So I just wanted to share our opinion. And, uh, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is John Wilkinson. I'm the president of the Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association. Um, we shared a letter this afternoon, sorry, that was coming a little bit late, but our neighborhood is supportive of this amendment. Um, listening to some of the comments this afternoon, this is not really a question of, uh, operations or management or enforcement. I think the question before is, is our visitor accommodations a suitable use in residential zones? We're talking about putting hotels in the middle of our neighborhoods. You could have a hotel next door to you. And we've, you know, are one of the neighborhoods that, um, has a higher density of them in Columbia. And so our neighbors have experienced this firsthand, up close, the consequences of it. And when we surveyed our neighborhood recently, um, and our neighborhood association has a hundred and sixty active members, eighty-five percent were supportive of this amendment essentially. And that other fifteen percent, you know, our neighborhood does include Mr. Bergman and other, um, STR operators, they're included, uh, in that survey. And this notion of, you know, nurses and military and contractors, they live in our neighborhoods too. And I think they deserve some of the same things that we're talking about in terms of safety and stability and really building a community. So when we talk about what do we want Columbia to be? Yes, we want to be welcoming, we want to be hosts. And this allows for that. We could have STRs across the city. I mean, look at all the, the zones up here. There's a lot of opportunity for them. But should they be in residential zones? We don't think so. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Questions, sir?
No.
Um, have there been many enforcement actions or problems in your neighborhood? Complaints that have been logged?
Logged, I don't know. The answer to that, you know, we, we hear that enforcement has been lacking. That I think it's been our experience as well. But when we hear from neighborhood or from our neighbors and conversations around the neighborhood and what people report back to the Neighborhood Association, yes, there's been a lot of frustration with them.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of problems are you experiencing that are, you know, causing the most concern?
Well, we've had three people killed. That was probably the most significant. But, you know, aside from that, which, you know, we see the parking, partying, you know, people not understanding the neighborhood, blocking driveways, you know, just generally creating disruption in the neighborhood. And unfortunately, it becomes incumbent on the neighbors to become the enforcement element. You know, the, the management companies aren't there. They often don't even, they know who's there, but they check in on an app. They don't actually know who's there. So it becomes the neighbor's problem. And then they have to call nine-one-one, they have to be vigilant of what's going on. So it, it, it puts that on the neighbors.
I've got a, uh, quick question for staff. So can these, and particularly with, you're in an overlay district, is that correct? Historic overlay district?
Elmwood Park is, yes.
Or are those overlays allowed to adopt like specific guidelines that would prevent or regulate the use, that use? Like I know they do it with DRC for aesthetics and renovations and things like that.
Um, our overlays, you know, there's always exceptions, right? But, um, they are generally, for example, Elmwood Park is a historic district and design overlay, it, it doesn't regulate use. Um, you know, as we were just talking about, the airport overlay, you know, it, it further restricted use. But you would probably want to be able to tie it to the purpose of the overlay.
Thank you. Any questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Good afternoon, thank you for an opportunity to be in front of you today. My name is Denise Wellman. I also am president of a historic district. And like Mr. Wilkinson said, this is a zoning issue. This is not about ordinances, operations or about enforcement, even though we could talk about those at length. Um, this is about zoning that would protect neighborhoods. Residentially zoned areas are zoned that way for a reason. They're to be family residential areas. And we now have hotels in our residential areas. Imagine, would you want one of those right next to you? And I think that is a question that is before you. We're only, we're not taking any of them away that are currently there. Yes, they could convert them to long-term rentals. But I'm always, I'm interested by the fact that, no, that's not financially lucrative enough for the hosts. But you know what it does? Is it damages the infrastructure, the culture of our neighborhoods. We need to be a neighborhood of neighbors, people that really care about neighborhoods and people that are visitors. We like to have them in our neighborhoods. We have them. Cotton Town is about forty percent resident, excuse me, forty percent rental. But we need people that engage in the neighborhood in ways that advance the neighborhood. Historic districts have a significant positive impact on the economic viability of our capital city. But you're destroying property values with short-term rentals. People don't want to live next to them and it's really hard to sell property. And then they're going to go to another investor. Um, that's not what we need if we really care about our historic assets. We should protect them. This is a zoning change simply to protect the residentially zoned areas in our city that are not hotels. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional members of the public want to comment?
I have a question for staff. I mean, and first, I guess, just general commentary across the board. This is, this issue has, I think, kind of been percolating for a while and coming up. And I think, well, excuse me, while this is an attempt at addressing it, I don't know if it brings together everybody in a way that's maybe balancing the right sensitivity to different areas and different sides of the issue. Could, if we, you know, vote this down or either way, is there a way to schedule a workshop that maybe facilitates more dialogue around just different concerns to, to craft another, um, you know, zoning amendment?
So state law gives the planning commission thirty days to make a recommendation to council. So you, you can recommend approval, you can recommend denial. Um, if, if you defer it, it would continue the council. It's currently scheduled for the December, um, uh, eighteenth, I believe. Let's see, hold on. Just want to make sure I'm getting the right date.
I feel like we've heard a lot of really good thoughts on both sides of this and just.
Uh, yeah, December sixteenth, I apologize. Uh, city council meeting for, for a public hearing. Um, and I think the next planning commission meeting is on December eleventh. Is that also correct? I believe so. Um, so it, it, um, I, I will say that there, there has been, um, discussion at council and, and, you know, there certainly, it would be a public hearing at council. Um, it is, it is certainly the planning commission's prerogative to recommend approval, recommend denial or recommend, uh, changes. Um, but I just want you to be mindful of that timeframe.
So if we deferred, could changes be made between this hearing and the next one? Like changes to the text? Or do we have to vote on the same text as it is now? Does that make sense?
I would suggest that it would be more appropriate for the planning commission to determine, um, what changes they would want to see. And perhaps if that wants, if you would want that to be part of your recommendation to council.
I, I guess I'm curious too, if this was deferred in the interim, could we schedule a public work session to, to take these points in the, maybe given different guidance on this motion or this amendment?
You know, the, the planning commission could set up a workshop. Um, I'm looking at the calendar here. And of course, there's Thanksgiving in a couple of weeks, so, um, I mean, we can, we can try to find a date if that's what the planning commission wants.
I think that's what, I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone up here, but I would be inclined to want to try to facilitate that. Seems like there's been a lot of discussion today that would be, you know, maybe more healthfully exercised into a text amendment that had sensitivity, sensitivity to points we've heard on both sides.
Sure. Um, another option.
This is really broad and I think there could be a lot of casualties.
Yeah, I mean, just for, for discussion, you know, um, seems to me to be a obviously contentious issue and not the first time it's been brought up in the city, our city or any other city. This feels really extreme. Um, there's probably a middle ground, perhaps. Um, maybe not, maybe that's what it comes back to. But it feels very extreme to make this decision today. I would not be inclined to propose, to support this.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can we take a brief recess so we can maybe talk through the legality of trying to set something up between now and the public hearing?
Sure. Can, uh, we get a motion and take a brief recess?
I motion to take a brief recess.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Be back in session. Think where we left it, there was discussion of motions for deferral and the ability to discuss in the interim. Or if anyone wants to go for a different discussion, we can discuss.
Sure. Can I address the?
Yes, thank you.
So, you know, this is part of the process of going through a text amendment. It does go to the planning commission. And then again, it does go to city council. This is a public meeting. The, the public hearing is at city council. And so really, the planning commission's role is to make a recommendation. And it can be a recommendation for, against, or we recommend. It could be something in between, right? It could be, you know, we, we have specific language we would wish to propose. But, but yeah, I, I think the deferral is not an option.
So is the next planning, is the next council after the next planning commission session?
Yes. I mean, it has, it has been advertised and.
So if we defer to the next planning commission?
You would, you would not be transmitting a recommendation to council in, in terms of what we would be sharing with council. So, you know, effectively, at some point, it, it, it becomes, according to state law, it becomes a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Any further questions from planning commissioners?
To be clear, so we can't defer to the next meeting, is what you're saying?
You know, again, it's the planning commission's job to make a recommendation to council on the proposed language.
All right. So in its current written form, can we get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will recommend denial of the recommendation to amend Unified Development Ordinance, Shepard 17-Article 4. How far do I need to read that?
I think that's far enough. Thank you. Got a motion?
A second and a motion.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Brabham?
Aye.
Mr. Quasi? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Cuvney?
No.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Osorio?
No.
And Mr. Cone?
No.
The motion passes 4-3, or 5-3, excuse me.
This is going to bring us to S Plan 2025-0018 at 875 Catawba and adjacent Northern Lot. This project entails the construction of a seven-story multifamily residential building and associated parking on 1.88 acres at 875 Catawba Street. The proposed development will contain 237 apartments, amenity space, and a parking garage. In addition to vehicular parking in the garage, the applicant will be providing parking spaces within the Lincoln, Lincoln Street right-of-way and providing 80 bicycle parking spaces. In accordance with Section 17-25I6 of the UDO, the planning commission shall approve a major site plan upon finding that the proposed major site plan demonstrates all of the following standards are met. The proposed zoning are allowed in the zoning district. The development and uses in the site plan comply with Article 4. The development and proposed site plan is in, in its general layout design comply with the applicable standards. The development proposed in the site plan and general layout design comply with all applicable standards of Article 6 and that the development in a proposed plan is consistent with all other applicable standards and ordinances and code. Staff has reviewed the major, major site plan and has determined that the standards of 17-25I6 of the UDO are met. And if the planning commission is inclined to grant approval of the request, we would ask that they do it with staff comments. And I believe the applicant is present and can explain their case further.
Thank you. The applicant, please come up and tell us about the project or the application.
Hello, I am Tommy Sinnett, representative of Cardinal Group, the developer.
Mark D'Souza, civil engineer with Thompson.
We're excited about the opportunity. The site is currently vacant and has been so for nearly a decade. And we're really excited to have the opportunity to develop in downtown. So I'll let our civil.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. So the, if we can go to the site plan, C one point one, I would appreciate it. So just general overview of the project, it is currently a warehouse, it's on two parcels. The plan is to combine the two parcels to two point one acres. It's, it's zoned appropriately for multifamily. Both streets, north, south is Lincoln Street and east, west is Catawba to the south. Both are city streets. To the west is the C S X rail easement, it's a hundred foot easement. And then to the north is a adjacent property, I believe it's a commo communication center. North is Greek Village. So what we're doing on the eastern frontage, Lincoln Street, there is considerable right of way. So the developer has planned in accordance with, in coordination with the city to adhere to the bike walk program for the city in that we're providing a thirteen foot bike lane. And then adjacent to that, in addition, there's a eight foot walking sidewalk. So those are both proposed on Lincoln Street. And then they'll tie in back to Lincoln Street to continue north of Greek Village. The, that also includes streetscape and landscaping that the developer will keep and maintain for, for the city. The southern frontage is Catawba Street and there's additionally, there's streetscaping, landscaping proposed there. The road will tie back into the railroad crossing going west. Let me see if I've missed anything here. Utilities are all precapacities approved, so we have water and sewer already generally approved with the city. We just have to get the plans hammered out and turned in. So sewer comes from Lincoln Street and so does water. There's sufficient service in those lines. Stormwater is going to be a underground detention system and it's going to be handled. Their roof drainage will go in and go into a detention system before it's pushed out. So all those things are in compliance with the city standards. And, and I believe that is all that I, I wanted to present, so we'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. D'Souza, I saw your drainage plan and I saw the notation that, I figured it'd be underground detention. But I couldn't see any piping or discharge. What are your thoughts on, where is this discharged, to Catawba?
Good, good question. So the current drainage basin goes towards C S X Railroad to the west. So the plan is to, the detention underground is going to pump up and then have a little level spreader to go back to the railroad where it currently goes.
Interesting.
Right, so we are in coordination with C S X right now and their engineered team. Sure, to their engineering team to make sure that everything's good with them.
Okay, when you answer my question, thank you.
I had entertained putting some drainage in the Catawba Street right of way, but it's just too shallow to make it, make it worth it.
It looks like a tough drainage situation.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I have a question for staff. On the agenda, did it show a airport overlay for this property?
It did, but I believe that's the state airport overlay. So it, it, the zoning is not airport overlay.
Okay, I was just thinking about the height limitations, but we're confident that we're not violating that or that's not a limitation on this parcel?
Yeah, they've already, Andrew was informing to me that they've already done the clue tool to make, to make sure that there's no intrusion in that area.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one more question and I apologize. And maybe Mr. D'Souza might need to come back up. But I noticed in the traffic study that a level of service was going to be exceeded over in the Greek Village. Is there any way to resolve that or is there any plan to work that out?
So the, it's in the build and no build condition.
I'm sorry, it's in what?
The build and no build condition will produce that result. So part of it is the pedestrian increase over the next two years. So all the foot traffic, the students, so the, the challenge was making a left turn. If you're, I'm sorry.
Like McCurry Street or something?
It's called Mark Buck Street, I believe, it's right there, Mark Buck Street.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Mark Buck Way.
Okay.
And the number of pedestrians traveling through the intersection can produce, reduce the gaps to make that turn. So there, there's no way to really improve that. If we do a dedicated right turn and left turn, they have further to cross and it's harder to have visibility. So.
There's really no way to resolve.
Right, right. And we, we feel that it would occur in the build and no build condition. So it's, it's not necessarily contingent on this project.
I see.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
There any members of the public that want to speak? Thank you.
How you folks doing? Good to see you. My name is Reagan Freeman. I'm here on behalf of a group called Palmetto Walkbike. We do the state pedestrian and bike advocacy work. I'm here in Columbia. I just wanted to mark this, this will be the first cycle track in Columbia. That's the bike lane they were talking about, it's very wide. I think that's tremendous, it's incredible. I am in support of this really because it's the public right of way improvements that are great to kind of see as our city continues. Infield development is always very welcome here, it's very, very good overall. Yeah, if we look longer term, I know there's, were at least some concerns about the level of service and things like that. Building these facilities and giving people that ability to kind of modal shift, right? And be able to feel more comfortable and safer walking or biking, I imagine that will help it longer term. So yes, thank you so much, this is really, really exciting. We had to come out and say thank you. I will just quickly say, and I just don't think they, they caught it, since this is our first one, the most dangerous natural predator in Columbia is an eighteen year old driving on their phone recklessly. I would love just a bollard on that cycle track where the driveways are on Lincoln, just to make sure no one's thinking it's an extra lane, if you get what I'm saying. So maybe with that recommendation as well. But yeah, it's, it's a phenomenal day. It's, it's really great that the developer and the city are working on this together, that kind of public, private moment. You know, that's not something that you see often here, so very, very cool stuff. So thank you.
What exactly is your recommendation?
So if you look on your plan here, on the driveways on Lincoln Street, where the cycle track intersects with the driveways, just adding a bollard essentially.
A bollard at each one, both sides?
And so no one thinks they can, you know, drive that way, would be my recommendation. If we can afford that, hopefully.
I'm seeing heads shaking over there, like.
Good to go, I figured it would, so yeah. Again, thank you guys, this is cool. I think we were here for Williams Street a few months ago, so it's great, this is all happening back to back to back.
Sorry, I didn't catch it, what organization did you say you were with?
It's Palmetto Walkbike, we used to be called the Palmetto Cycling Coalition, so we do the state ped bike work. I'm also with a group called the Colatown Bike Collective here in town. So we're a big fan of all the, the cool stuff you guys are doing. So I had to come out here and celebrate this too.
What's your last name again?
Reagan Freeman.
Freeman?
Yes. Anything else, sir? Cool.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any commission members have any questions or comments? All right, for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve S Plan dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero one eight at eight seventy five Catawba Street, subject to staff comments and subject to compliance of the request of Mr. Freeman to add some bollards.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I get clarification on who seconded the motion, I'm sorry?
Mr. Causey.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And that's going to take us to S Plat twenty twenty five zero zero five three, seventy three hundred block of Patterson Road. On October ninth, the planning commission deferred this application to allow the opportunity for the applicant to meet with the community. Prior to the November thirteenth planning commission meeting, the applicant states that they have had conversations with the community and will be hosting a meeting prior to the November thirteenth meeting. It's my understanding that they have had meetings with the neighborhood. They have provided us with some shining sheets as well as some diagrams that we'll put on the record. To recap, this is sixty one point seventy one acres on the east side of Patterson Road, located near the intersection of Trinity Drive. And a proposed subdivision will contain two hundred and forty three detached single family residences with an average lot size of five thousand five hundred square feet. And a portion of the site will be preserved due to the wetlands and open space and canopy retention requirements. In accordance with section seventeen two, five, J S of the uni, of the U D O, the planning commission shall approve the preliminary plat upon finding that the proposed preliminary plat is in substantial conformity with the approved sketch plan and complies with the standards of Article Six of the land development standards and any applicable standards in the ordinance and any other applicable city ordinances and regulations. And staff has reviewed the preliminary plat to determine that it is in substantial conformance with the approved sketch plan. And if the commission is inclined to grant the approval, we just ask that you do it with staff comments. And the applicant is present and can go into their case a little bit more.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come to the podium?
Good evening, commissioners, Kevin Singletary with Great Southern Homes. I'll be brief, given the time, and since this is something we looked at last month. What I'll cover is the additional community outreach that we did. As I discussed in October, we were in the process of scheduling a meeting with the Church of the Cross to discuss, you know, how to be good neighbors for each other. The fact that Mission Lane, they currently uses their access and parking. And obviously, it's incorporated as one of our entrances and the principal street within our neighborhood. That meeting went well. Right now, our engineers are working on some parking schematics for the church to ultimately make a determination of how they want to address their parking. And we're going to help them out with that. Considering on street might do a separate parking lot, it'll ultimately be an agreement that we come to together in terms of what makes the most sense for them. The church was also very generous and allowed us to host our community meeting at their chapel. That occurred on Tuesday. We had a number of folks that we had met with previously in October, as well as some new folks coming to attend that. The sign in sheets I provided are from the meeting with the church and the meeting on Tuesday. You know, there were lots of questions, we were able to answer them. I was very pleased that, you know, what folks communicated to me was that they had no intention of speaking against it and were appreciative of us meeting with them. And finally, additional meeting that we had was our follow up meeting with D O T and Richland One to discuss the traffic mitigations as it relates to Burnside Elementary School. And I believe you've just been handed images that show just some sketch plans of the two mitigations that D O T identified for us in the traffic impact analysis. The one that's for Burnside would be a realignment of the school's entrance to the intersection of Trinity and Patterson and the creation of a left turn lane on Patterson onto Trinity and from Patterson into the school's entrance. The other mitigation that S C D O T asked of us is to convert the intersection of Patterson and Leesburg to a right in, right out only intersection. So we have done, we don't have the full designs on those yet, but we have the sketch plans and we'll move forward with that. And obviously, as part of getting our encroachment permit, will be the approval of those plans by D O T as well as for the entrance of Burnside, Richland One. We'll have to approve that. And if you have any questions for me, happy to answer them.
Do you, any commission members have any questions, the applicant?
I do. You, the Patterson-Leesburg Road, right in, right out, looks interesting. And, you know, because pork chops don't just prevent people from making left turns. So they're probably going to make you put a median in, I would assume.
We, we've had discussion with D O T, they want as minimal impact changes at that intersection due to recent infrastructure improvements that have already been made in that area, as well as they're not particularly interested in right of way expansion. The, what the traffic impact analysis displayed, and it was surprising, is just a high number of right turns, almost exclusively occurring at that intersection. Some lefts were occurring, but it was overwhelmingly right turns. I think that a lot of that has to do with the fact that Green Lawn has two, you know, traffic control lights at both ends and the intent is clearly to push track, traffic to Green Lawn for left turns onto Leesburg.
But D O T is going to enforce this, they're going to make you create some sort of right turn?
That's correct. My entire experience of development has been that what they want from me is what they will get.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any members of the public that would like to speak or in this application? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jean Harmon, I live in the neighborhood. I was not informed of the meeting that you had at the church. And me and a couple of my neighbors.
Would you mind stating your name again?
Jean Harmon.
Jean Harmon, okay, thank you.
We were not informed of that meeting. We were told by the association president that they were not going to oppose it. Not opposing it, I'm opposing that there's traffic issues already in place. The school is over capacity. So, and they are very aware of what's going on around them and they are not happy with it. So it just seems to be, it keeps going on. We're going to still have accidents at that landing coming out of Patricia, excuse me, Patterson onto Caroline. And they're already building three hundred plus homes there. So you're adding another two hundred and forty four homes to what's already being built, which is going to cause more traffic accidents, more traffic going in and out. And there's only two outlets, there's Leesburg Road and Garner's Ferry. That is it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, any other members of the public that would like to speak or in the application? Any questions or comments among commissioners? All right, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do want to acknowledge, and I believe that it was emailed to you earlier, but we do want to acknowledge that we did receive an email from Ms. Cindy Clu dated today at eleven oh six. And we wanted to put that on the record.
Noted, thank you. All right. You got a motion for the application? Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve S Plat twenty twenty five dash zero zero five three, seventy three hundred block of Patterson Road, along with staff comments.
All right, I've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Was that from me? Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do we have any other business since the publication?
The only other thing I wanted to do is I want to introduce y'all to Colette Gruber, who is our new annexation coordinator. She's been with us a few weeks, we're super happy to have her on board, all of us, especially Andrew. So we'll finally get some help with annexation stuff. So anyway, you'll be seeing her and, as she gets up to speed and just wanted y'all to, to be able to meet her today. So that's it, do y'all have any other business?
What's, what's Andrew gonna do?
You know, nothing really.
Okay, all right.
I was gonna say too, is this, is this y'all's first or second? Okay, that's right. All right, well, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, on your second? Yeah. What else? All right, if, that'll do it, I have a motion to adjourn.
All right, that'll do it, I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
All right, motion and a second? Second. All right, everybody in favor? We adjourn, thank you.
Alice, I bet you're really happy Harris came now.